...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please make sure you have your microphones on and cell phones off, please. Andrea, can we have roll call?
Mayor Bain.
Here.
Councillor Baker.
Here.
Councillor Lundstrom.
Here.
Councillor Scalisi.
Here.
Councillor Sherman.
Here.
Okay, we've all had a chance to look at the minutes for the regular meeting of April 22nd. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So move.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next up, visitors and delegations. The Colorado Legislature has changed some things in the last session, and we have the Judge Stephen Jones here to update us on some of the changes that we need to be aware of. Judge, you have the floor.
Um, I don't want to spend a great deal of time getting into the weeds about this. The current legislative session dealt with issues that are perceived to be municipal court issues and also county court issues. The general theme of the legislation is, and these bills were primarily driven by both the ACLU and the Criminal Defense Bar. Basically, the idea is that for low-level offenses, anything below an M3, a Class III misdemeanor, in county court, which carries six months in jail, the idea is there should be no incarceration, pre-trial incarceration. It doesn't really talk about post-trial incorporation, rather incarceration, but pre-trial incarceration is basically been deemed to be something that is not in the public's interest. One can debate, I suppose, the efficacy of that thought, but nonetheless, I think that's where the legislature seems to be going. Most of these bills that have been put forth are bipartisan, so they have Republican and Democrat support. Unfortunately, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I think a lot of the people in the legislature who are advancing these causes are acting on anecdotal information that doesn't necessarily reflect what's really going on in municipal courts, or even county courts for that matter. In some ways, the legislation almost seems to be a solution, basically a solution in search of a problem that doesn't really exist. The thought is that for years municipal courts were locking people up for non-payment of fines in this state, and that they were also incarcerating people for long periods of time prior to getting them in the court. Neither of those assumptions in this state have really been true. And the problem is the legislators do not busy themselves with empirical data, they're more concerned about anecdotes, stories from people, horror stories that they can dredge up, because you can always find a bad example almost anywhere in a place, any time, where somebody gets locked up for a couple of weeks, somebody forgets about them, and then they miss a job interview or something like that. So that's what's happening with this legislation, which I think is largely based on anecdotal presentations as opposed to real empirical studies about what happens. So the general theme is incarceration is a dirty word, especially for low-level offenses, and they want to try and avoid any kind of pre-trial incarceration for sure. And that means in terms of warrants and also for just general appearances before the court. So the idea is for anything on an M3 or below, in an initial stage, you're not supposed to have any kind of monetary bail. So the idea of cash bonds or cash-related bonds has gone out the window. The problem with that notion, though, is what it does is it de-incentivizes people to show up. If people have skin in the game, they typically tend to show up, but people don't have any skin in the game, they typically don't. Why would you? And so basically tends to incentivize the idea that there'll be more FTAs, failures to appear than there otherwise would have been, because there's no real way to have them have any particular stake in the outcome, even at the beginning. So what they did was they changed it in terms of the bond and bail statute, that's the primary change. Now, that doesn't really change much in terms of what we do here, as you might remember, a couple of years ago, in the last couple of cycles, there was a bill that required us to conduct hearings within 48 hours if somebody was arrested, and then we had to PR them at that point. That's been going on here for the last couple of years, we've never really had a problem with that. We never had a problem with it in any event, but now if somebody is arrested on a warrant because they failed to appear in court, then we have a hearing within 48 hours. Since we only have court here once a month, we do it typically by phone, and they're in the jail, and they set us up with a phone conference, and we work it out, I usually PR, I bond them, and then they're out, and they're able to go about their merry way. Or if they have some other hold from the district court or some other county court or parole violation, then they're being held independently. So it really hasn't changed the way we do business down here at all in any event. The new bail statute doesn't do it either, because it really doesn't affect our ability to issue cash bonds for people who fail to appear. So for instance, if you have somebody in a non-trafficking case, in a criminal case, who fails to appear for their court, then what happens is we will issue a warrant, and it will be, it will have a cash bond associated with it. The problem is you're going to have to PR bond them when they show up. But by that point, you get them in the court, you advise them either on the phone or in person, hopefully the case will be resolved, and then it's over anyway. So in terms of the effect it's going to have on our operations here in municipal court, probably not going to have any effect at all. The bigger bill that was pending that didn't get passed is called House Bill 1226, and that deals with bond reform. That proposed bill did not make it to the governor's desk, thankfully, but it's an odd bill, because what it does is it basically is requiring, not municipalities, the state judicial districts to come up with pre-trial release plans and services that most of them are already using. But this is a mandate, and it's going to be a question about how they're going to fund this, and that's why I don't think it got out of the committee all the way. I think it passed the House, it didn't pass the Senate, because it's a question of funding, how they're going to put money into this, because a huge requirement to reform the entire way about how people are released in more serious cases, with Class III misdemeanors and above and district court felonies. So there's a requirement that they're going to have all the districts, judicial districts, come up with a plan that's going to have pre-trial release plans, that's going to be based on objective release criteria about risk assessments and things of that nature, that's going to make a difference in terms of how those people are released or not released. The interesting part about that bill is the cities were not even mentioned. We didn't get mentioned. Now, some people are drawing a bad conclusion about that, some people are drawing a negative inference that that means that they're somehow working against us, but frankly, I don't see it that way, I see it as a boon, because if they went about doing this, it'd just be another, you know, imposed mandate, unfunded mandate that we'd have to deal with. And I don't see that happening, because there's too many municipalities, and I think the funding mechanism would be impossible to try and come up with. So, but right now, that bill as it currently existed this last session did not deal with municipalities at all, didn't even mention cities. My guess is it's going to be coming back, though, next year, that's what happens with these things, they tend to recycle, and they'll be back, and there'll be more debate and discussion about how they're going to fund this, and I guess we'll see what they do then about whether they're going to try and bring us into this idea or not. I think frankly it'd be very difficult, and I think you have to also remember about municipal court is the ACLU and the Criminal Defense Bar, with some justification, is concerned about municipal courts, because municipal courts tend to operate independently on their own, whereas the state system is governed by the state umbrella, where you have state judicial, and there's basically uniform processes, uniform forms, pretty much everything is uniform, and there's an overarching authority, whereas municipal courts, the overarching authority is all of you, and that's independent of each city council in each municipality. So that's kind of where the ACLU and the Criminal Defense Bar are going. They would like to try and bring more uniformity into this process, I think it's going to be a hard thing. There's also the notion that they don't really like the fact that municipal court deals with criminal cases, they think it should be traffic cases only. The problem with that, as we've talked about before with some of you, local problems in that situation would go unaddressed. If you decided to take all the code violations and put them in the county court, they wouldn't last five minutes. So all the local problems involving dog and code violations and nuisance violations, they would be basically not dealt with. All the violations regarding lower-level criminal behavior like thefts, sometimes interference with utilities, assaults, batteries, things of that nature, they would, if they went to county court, again, they'd be dismissed, because all they have time to deal with up there is domestic violence and major traffic cases. So that's why municipal courts was a valid purpose, because it deals with local problems, I think in a more efficient or nimble way than it could ever happen anywhere else. But again, the Criminal Defense Bar and the SUU, you don't quite see it that way, they'd like to bring uniformity to all this, but it's going to be very difficult to do that, because every municipality has a different local problem. Your problems here, trust me, are vastly different than they are in Prebbo. Your population is different, your needs are different, the kind of behavior that goes on is different, it's entirely different. So to bring uniformity to municipal court would be virtually impossible, I think, because of that, that, that unique, the uniqueness of each city. One thing that the Colorado Municipal Judges Association did this year, which I thought was good, they did this last year and they're doing it this year, they hired a lobbyist to try and give us a voice down there, so that they will listen to the judges' concerns, because we really up to this point until about a year ago had no voice in the legislature. I know they really spoke for us, and so again, what they're doing is making legislation on the basis of anecdotes as opposed to what really is going on, and judges, as you know, are not even really able to go down and participate in a political process, and so our ability to get our voices heard sometimes is very limited. But the lobbyists are doing a good job about trying to keep us ahead of some of these ideas, and when they do show up, trying to get language in that's going to help us. So for instance, in that last bill, the bail and bond reform bill, it says if any, you can't use cash bonds unless it would be of an equivalent offense in county court. Most of our statutes, most of our ordinances, criminal ordinances, track the state statute. So we're not any different position than the county court is because of that. So basically, that language was inserted because of the lobbyists to try and help us out, so they wouldn't just completely disenfranchise us. And the other thing that they're trying to change, and this is something that we've already been dealing with, is discovery. There's a new rule, the criminal procedure rules are governed by the State Supreme Court, and I don't know if it's passed yet, it's definitely good, did that, did that go into effect?
It did go into effect.
It did, okay. So it's part of, it's part of Rule 16, right?
Yes.
Rule 16 requires discovery. So it's triggered, though, in municipal court, if I remember right, by a request. The defendant has to make a request. In district court and county court, discovery is automatic, which means discovery is the material that the prosecutor holds has to be disclosed to the defense, or to the defendant. And in this jurisdiction, in municipal court, it has to be based on a request by a defendant. So we get that, we've had that before, we already have a process for that, it's not really a big sea change for us. So if a defendant wants to have copies of what we have in our file, which are basically the police reports, videotapes, things of that nature, all they have to do is make a request, they're informed about the fact that it exists, if they want it, they fill out a form we have, and then the clerk makes sure their copies were made and given to them. So that's not really going to change much for us either, because it's based, it's triggered only on a request by the defendant, which is a big difference as opposed to being automatic. If it were automatic, and we had to start disclosing all this material in every case, you're talking about a huge outlay of manpower, paper, time, things of that nature. So it's just based on a triggering of the defendant's request, and so far, again, we have that, but it doesn't come up all that often, and if it does, we already have a process in place. So that change did take effect, and that was one of the key features of it. Expungement continues to be a bit of a problem. They call it expungement, it's more sealing. What happens is if a juvenile, any kind of juvenile, on any kind of criminal case, particularly your minor possessions, minor possession of alcohol, marijuana, things like that, if they successfully complete a probation period, and it's successful, then they can get their record sealed, which means it doesn't follow them around, which means that they can disclose, they don't have to disclose it to third parties, and so that's continuing to be a big issue. They keep expanding that. Now adults can also have their records expunged in certain circumstances, if they successfully complete their period of supervision or their requirements, whatever they may be. And so those things are in play, we have a procedure for that, and it really hasn't been tested yet to a great degree, but it's coming up. What happens is when we set a review date at the end of their period of supervision or the time that they're going to be on probation for, they have to appear for that, that's a condition for successful completion. If they don't show up, then they're not successfully completed, no expungement necessary. However, if they do appear, and it goes through, and they've done everything they're supposed to do, then we're told, we tell them that they can get this record expunged, we give them a form, there's a fee, there's a process they have to fill out the form with, give it back to us, and then we have to send it to the city attorney, who has to review it, and then he has to sign off on it as well to make sure that it's legitimate, and it conforms with the statute and the statutory requirements, and then if that's the case, then it comes to me, and then I sign it. The problem is that's coming up more now, because the statute's been in effect for about a year, we begin to have all of our cases that we put on that kind of delayed process coming up, and we're going to start having more and more of those expungements, sealings coming up. That's going to be a growing problem in the future. It's probably going to involve, unfortunately, poor Bo over here, he's going to have to get, jump into this more than he probably would like to, but unfortunately, that's what we're going to have to do.
You know, I think most of those files are going to be essentially automatic, it's just sealing.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a big deal, right?
Yeah.
But that's what we're going to have to start dealing with on a more regular basis, because they're all kind of coming due, so to speak. And I think that's generally where we are. As you know, there is a court appointment process we have in place now, we have a court-appointed lawyer that we go to if we need to have somebody appointed, on a very limited basis for the kinds of cases that do show up once in a great while. I think our exposure last year was, what, $1,200? And there's a grant process that the clerk, our clerk, Melissa, submitted, and she received $6,000 for that, so that fund is sitting there, so we're not going in the hole paying for court-appointed counsel. We really don't use court-appointed counsel that often, but it does come up occasionally if someone's facing jail, and it's a realistic probability, then that is somebody who will get a court-appointed counsel, if they're otherwise indigent, and sometimes they qualify. So that process has been working out, the state gave us some money for that unfunded mandate, which is helpful. But other than that, I think things are running fairly smoothly, these statutes really haven't changed the way we do business very much, if at all. I don't really anticipate much change in the future, and so I'm hoping that things settle down a little bit, and then we'll see what happens next session, because you never can tell, you know? Depends on what the agenda is next year, and we never know. Does anybody have any questions?
Since we've gone to be a court of record, probably, we're into that probably a year, how is that, is that going fairly well?
Yeah, it works out well. Again, the benefit of that, in my opinion, has always been they're imposing more requirements on municipal courts, and I think if you're not a court of record, it's going to be difficult to meet those requirements, those mandates, especially the more volume you have. Now, there's some courts that are so small, it doesn't make much difference, they meet like once every three months or something, and it's all traffic cases. But that's not our court, our court deals with pretty much everything, all the way down from assaults all the way down to, you know, minor traffic cases. So I think that in that respect, I think it was very useful to do, because in order to meet these, to meet and to be up to speed on these requirements that they're putting on us, it's really helpful to have procedures in place, and the court of record helps us do that. Also, I think it also helps in terms of appeal process, which we've talked about before, which is that it's not a new trial, so all somebody can do is appeal if they're convicted on a basis of error, so it's a review, it's an appellate review, it's not a trial, it's not a trial de novo or a new trial, so basically, it cuts that out of the whole process, too, which I can't remember the last time we had an appeal, probably once in the last two years, which is kind of rare. So yeah, the court of record works out pretty well, our recording devices seem to be working okay, it's a bit primitive, but they work okay, so, not as good as what you have, but we hope, so far it's been tested, I had to have a transcript written not too long ago for a lawyer who was appointed on a case, and it came out and looked like it was, you know, coherent, so I thought, well, that's good, so. But other than that, I think that's how pretty much we're doing, and again, if anybody has any other questions about pending legislation, future things? Okay.
It was a long legislative session.
It was, it was, yes, and it's going to get longer next time, too, probably. And again, I don't anticipate these ideas will go away. And I don't know how much control you folks have, but you know, the cities do have some clout, you have, you have a league.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of what goes on down there is, again, it's based on anecdote that has nothing to do with the way the reality of these courts work, and I hate to say, but I think some of them are being greatly misled by advocates who believe that things are true that aren't. And, I mean, I can tell you, I know most of the colleagues, most of my colleagues around the state, and I know how these courts operate, and I don't see this, people don't sit in jail, they don't languish, we don't put anybody in jail for non-payment of fines, that ended, you know, a long time ago, but it ended clearly two years ago, you can't do that, we didn't do it anyway. So, you know, the way these courts work is not, they're not designed to be that punitive, they're designed to be more remedial, they're more of a problem-solving court, in my opinion, where you have local problems that you're trying to mediate to get to a good result, and to try and figure out how to get this so that they don't keep coming back in. Punishment is really a last resort. If somebody pushes you against the wall, refuses to do anything, they clean up their property over a year or something, well then, sometimes you've got to go that route. But I would encourage all of you, seriously, if you want to come in and watch, come in on any given, you know, morning docket, which we have the second Monday of every month, you can sit in there and watch the arraignment docket, the review docket, which is when cases are coming back for either sentencing or just to kind of take a look again at them for whatever it is we have to take a look at, and then the afternoons are the trials. So if you ever want to come and watch, you know, by all means, please do that, and you can sit and watch, and then if you have any critiques or questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, okay?
All right. Thank you very much, Judge, for the update.
Thank you very much, good seeing all of you, take care.
Okay, now we'll move on to citizen comment. Citizens are invited to speak to council on any item that does not have a public hearing scheduled. There's a five-minute time limit per person unless otherwise noted by the mayor. Please note that no formal action will be taken on an item that is not on the posted agenda due to the open meeting law provision. However, they may be placed on a future posted agenda if action is required. To veterans issued with questions, please submit them in writing to the city clerk, and someone from staff will respond. Is there anyone that would like to publicly comment tonight? Okay, we'll move on to number five, management. Recently, council asked staff to look into the possibility of bringing in an associate municipal court judge, and I'm happy to report tonight that we have a candidate for council to consider, and that is the appointment of Stephanie Galliano as the Assistant Municipal Court Judge. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Stephanie Galliano. Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, discussion. Andrea, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bain.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Councillor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councillor Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, the city clerk will administer the oath to Mrs. Galliano.
We'll come in front of the microphone, so everybody can hear. And there you go. And you'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Stephanie Galliano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
The municipal code and ordinances.
The municipal code and ordinances.
Of the city of Brush.
Of the city of Brush.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All of the duties pertaining.
All of the duties pertaining.
To the office of Associate Municipal Court Judge.
To the office of Associate Municipal Court Judge.
For the city of Brush, Colorado.
For the city of Brush, Colorado.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, you talked, I endorse. All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 5B, we have a public hearing application for a special use permit on behalf of TSA Microgrid Energy LLC, and we're going to go, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll hear a staff report from Tyler Purvis.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packets, you have everything, I'm going to be going over here tonight for the report on this. So an introduction, TCA Microgrid, Microgrid Energy LLC, DBA Pivot Energy LLC, has submitted an application for a special use permit for the operation of a 2-megawatt direct current solar project as part of XL Energy Solar Rewards Community Program in an industrial zone. The subject property is at the Brush Agri Park, currently addressed 19188 Highway 71. In your reports is an area location map, the applicant's project narrative, site plans, the geotech report summary, drainage letter, land title survey, lease area, and access easement. All the public notifications that are required were put out. In the review criteria, what you were going to weigh this project against, and our land code specifies a special use permit as a use which the city council finds is essentially desirable to the community, but the indiscriminate allowance of which within a district could cause traffic congestion, noise, and general deleterious effects on the value, safety, or health of the community. Therefore, the city council considers each special use on an individual basis with emphasis on the conditions of the specific site and its environment, and adequate and sufficient safeguards to lessen the impact of the use. Also, in our city code, these three aspects, council shall consider, A, the compatibility of the use with the adjacent uses and adjacent zone district as applicable, including the use's potential traffic generation, noise, lighting, parking requirements, and general deleterious effects on such adjacent uses and properties; B, conformance with a comprehensive plan, and C, the applicant's history of zoning compliance with the city. So the intent of this zone that this project is looking to go in, it defines the purpose of the industrial zone as the purpose to provide a zone in which industrial and manufacturing operations may locate as a permitted use when their operations do not constitute a detriment to the public health or welfare by reason of smoke, radiation, noise, dust, odor, gas, glare, vibration, particulate matter or water pollution, and to provide a location for industrial and manufacturing operations by special use permit when the operation is such that by reason of any of the foregoing, it may not be appropriate in the particular location in which it chooses to operate, or may require certain safeguards to be appropriate. So the background on the application, the subject location that the applicant is looking at is roughly nine acres of approximately 32 acres in the northeast intersection of Highway 71 and County Road T, the former English feedlot, now the Brush Agri Park. Last year, the property, along with land adjacent to the northwest and south, were annexed into the city of Brush for industrial uses. Currently, the, to the north, is the lamb harvesting facility that city council issued a special use permit for in October of 2018. So the proposal from the applicant, again, they seek to receive a special use permit for the operation of that 2-megawatt solar project. The project will utilize industrial standard equipment, including photovoltaic or solar modules, single-axis tracking racks supported by driven steel foundation posts, inverters used to convert DC electricity produced by solar modules into AC electricity, consistent with XL Energy's electric grid, a small weather station, and other necessary electrical equipment required to safely connect with the electric grid. The max height will be eight to 10 feet above the current grade. The project will generate energy during daylight hours on all days of the year. The project requires a secure perimeter fence between seven and eight feet tall with barbed wire. This fence, fencing requirement comes from the National Electric Code. Traffic after construction will only be four to eight times annually to conduct vegetation, maintenance, and system checkups. No landscaping is planned, because the solar array must operate shade-free to maximize performance and return to subscribers. The noise from the inverters will be comparable to that of an air conditioning unit, about 60 decibels. The project will not change the site's existing drainage patterns and will not impact infiltration rates. Signage will be limited to what is required by the National Electric Code and one or two signs with applicant's logo and contact information. There will be no external lights, and no personnel will be stationed at the site. Energy production is monitored remotely over the internet. So when it comes to the criteria review, the compatibility with the land code goes over these different elements, I won't read through them all exactly, I'll summarize them more or less, but any permitted or special use established or placed into operation within any zoning district shall comply with the minimum industrial performance standards specified in here, and the application appears to meet these standards. B, firefighting equipment and fire prevention that's acceptable to the fire department is required, and nothing is required since there's no storage or handling of flammable or explosive materials at this facility. C, no use shall cause electrical disturbance adversely affecting radios, television, or other electronic communication equipment in the vicinity. The solar array will not cause interference to radio, television, or electronic communication equipment in the vicinity. The applicant has stated that the equipment does not produce any vibrations. D, no use shall emit across property lines malodorous gases or matter in such quantity as to be readily detectable at any point. or matter in such quantity as to be readily detectable at any point, and the applicant has not identified any such gas or matter that will be readily detectable. E, no use shall discharge across property lines such as fly ash, dust, smoke, vapors, nauseous, toxic, or corrosive matter, or other air pollutants, and the applicant has not identified any discharges that will be detrimental or in conflict with air quality standards. F, no use shall produce any heat or glare in such a manner as to be a nuisance or create a hazard perceptible from any point beyond property lines. The solar panels, they do produce electrical, condenser, and not heat. Glare is not a factor because the panels are designed to absorb as much of the sunlight as possible. Anti-reflective coating and stippled glass help to trap light and also diffuse any reflected light to negate glare. And finally, because the panels follow the sun, any diffuse reflected light will be scattered into the air and not to surrounding properties. G, no use shall produce erosion or pollutants. The applicant has stated the project does not produce erosion or pollutants. H, no use shall amass within the lot or discharge beyond property lines any matter, liquid, or solid, etc. The applicant has stated that the project produces no waste. And finally, the interest of public welfare, hours of operation for any use may be restricted by the city council. And as I mentioned earlier, no personnel will be stationed at the site, only site visits as necessary by at most few people. So as this proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan, there's a list there of relevant goals, policies, and strategies from the city's plan that it does align with. Strategy 1.1.2, it encourages utilization of available land within the city limits before expanding boundaries. Policy 3.2, it supports redevelopment within existing city limits. Policy 11.2, continuing efforts to attract desirable business and industries to Brush. And Goal 13, provide public improvements that are designed and installed to deliver required service in a timely manner. And the applicant's compliance history, we have not made, they've made good effort to comply with all the necessary regulations and requirements. And as far as we know, they've had no history doing business with the city of Brush, thereby no violations with the city of Brush as well. So in conclusion, recommendation, if council finds that the proposal has met all the above criteria that we went over, staff does recommend that council grant a special use permit for the operation of the solar project at the Brush Agri Park with the following six conditions. Number one, revegetation with native grasses of site areas disturbed during construction must be sown after the solar installation is complete. Two, ensure compliance with city code regarding the growth and accumulation of weeds, brush, and debris on site, including on perimeter of site and against the fencing. Three, all lighting on the site must be downward and directional. Four, the applicant provided an engineer's assessment that the minimal impact on the existing ground surface will not impact the existing drainage pattern, draining patterns in the subdivision, thus not necessitating any additional stormwater drainage plan or system. However, due to the topography of the area, we would like to monitor the drainage on the site and determine if any additional drainage would work, work would be needed. If any stormwater issues develop, the applicant shall be required to address the issue to the approval of the city. Five, a commercial site plan shall be submitted, and approval obtained prior to construction to ensure compliance with codes and the special use permit. And six, access to and entry into the site shall be on the south side of the parcel using the designated access easement until an alternative access be designed by city staff. So that's in summary, any questions?
I had one question, Tyler, I was just thinking about. For solar panels, is there gonna be a requirement for any type of building permit for that? Or just on the little building that does the?
That's a great question. I believe to, we'll probably have to go with our consultants on that one who do the plan review, unless the applicant is here to speak on that, so they can probably speak about the history with other municipalities and what they've had to do.
Any other questions? Thank you Tyler.
All right.
At this point, I would invite the applicant to come forward to give a presentation.
At least you know how to fix it. Okay.
It's gone again.
Is this me now?
You're up.
Well, all this pretending.
We were so close.
Yeah.
Okay, we got it there, we got it there. Perfect. I'm afraid if I touch a button on that thing. We're gonna, maybe I'll just give my presentation with this nice picture. Good evening, my name is John Fitzpatrick. I'm the director of project development at Pivot Energy, and appreciate your time. Tyler, you did a great job tonight, you got a lot of the nuts and bolts out, so I'm not gonna go through that. I'm just gonna sort of tell you guys a little bit about who we are and about the project. And I'll give you guys a chance for Q and A after that, and we can go from there. So, we are Pivot Energy, AKA Microgrid Energy, but Pivot Energy. Founded ten years ago and headquartered over in Denver. We have a team that we've developed from a lot of folks who have been in solar here in Colorado now for well over a decade, so we've got a really deep team, even though we're a smaller development company. Projects like this, this small utility or community scale is really in our wheelhouse. This is what we do a lot of. Projects on the, sort of the small end would be something that might go on a business, maybe on a rooftop, or in some land next to a business, all the way up to these projects that we would say are medium in scale, you, small utility scale. We've been active, we've done a lot of projects over the last ten years, but we're based here in Colorado, as I mentioned, and we've done a lot of projects here and in a few other states. This is a community solar array, a little bit different from a utility array or an array that's owned by a business. And I think you guys know a little bit about these, so I don't want to go into it in too much detail, but it is a unique program because we're able to build a project at a given location, and members of the community are able to subscribe to the energy that gets produced and save money. So this is a really neat in-between because this project does something that other projects don't necessarily do. I included some basic program rules on here. Again, this is probably stuff that you're familiar with, but just some of the things that we do to maintain compliance with the rules XL has for us. This is just a quick look at some of our community solar customers here in Colorado. Some of these names are familiar. We've worked with a lot of municipalities and other nonprofits, school districts, things like that that are similar in size to the city of Brush. So as you guys know, the project is located up on the Old English Feedlot, and that's about 1.7 miles from where we are here tonight, in land that was recently annexed. The land is good because there is decent electrical infrastructure in this area. You guys are the landowner, but it's always nice when we can work with one landowner on these projects, and that would be you. Of course, the land would be leased to us for the project. And as Tyler mentioned, some of the adjacent uses in this area include some vacant, some rehabilitated ag land. Colorado 71 is on the west side of the property, and then the lamb processing facility is immediately to the north. This is a little bit more zoomed-in picture that I think you probably have in your packets, but you can see we're using the existing space here with some of the existing roads, carving out a space for a use there in green on the northwest side of the array. And of course, the lamb facility is to the north or up from that picture. And then talking about our project, two megawatts DC, that's two million watts. Whoops, too fast. That's about sixty-one hundred solar modules, and they'll look just like this one here. This is from a project that we just turned on last week that's over in Mesa County. That equivalent of sixty-one hundred modules would provide power for four hundred average homes during a year. That's an equivalent way to understand that. The racks do track the sun, so this is a picture, I'm looking north here. The sun is setting in the west, which is to the left, left side of the photo, and you can see the solar modules are tilted over that direction. Of course, in the morning, they're tilted the opposite way, and at midday, they're flat. The area inside the fence here for this project will be about ten acres. It'll end up being, end up being a little bit less to coincide with the proposed lease area. And access will come from Highway 71 across into the bottom at the south end of the site. Construction for these kinds of projects takes about six to ten weeks, and the operational lifespan on all of this equipment can be in excess of thirty-five years. So I wanted to include some pictures of projects that we've worked on over in Adams County, not too far from here, of again, just more examples of the same type of equipment. In the center picture, you're looking straight to the south, right down a row of modules that, do we have a laser pointer on this thing? Yes. This right here, this hub, is right about five feet tall. So, you know, for a guy like me, I'm kind of looking right at that, at midday, I'm right even with those modules. Again, this picture right here is showing you what the modules look like in the morning or the afternoon. They'll be tilted up to more effectively capture the sun's energy. And then here, you've just got a picture of a fence that's eight foot tall with chain link on one side, and, and something we call game fence here on the other side. And the modules are just in the background there, flat like this here at midday. And you can see underneath here, the vegetation is definitely coming back here. There's a very limited amount of disturbance of the ground that takes place on these projects. Because we drive the post down into the ground, we don't have to excavate, we don't have to pour concrete foundation, the soil is actually the foundation for the solar array. There is, and I don't have a picture, but since you brought it up, there was a mention of, you know, the equipment, where that goes, and whether or not there's a building permit associated with that. We typically have an equipment rack that is open to the elements. We don't close it in, so it's, sometimes it will have a shed on it. We haven't been designing things with sheds lately. Typically, we'll have like a two or three hundred square foot concrete equipment pad, and on that, we're gonna mount the transformer that comes from XL Energy. We're also gonna mount what we call the switchgear, so that's some of the equipment that takes the energy that the inverters invert from DC to AC and combines it and makes it suitable for interconnection with the grid. But we don't have anything that's enclosed or anything with doors on it. So, when it comes to building permits, of course, we're gonna submit fully engineered plan sets. And if you guys want to run that by the building department and want the building permit to come out, or the building department to come out and take a look at that during construction to ensure, you know, compliance with rebar in the concrete or whatever, we don't have an issue with that, that's fine. Of course, the electrical plan set will be most interesting to ensure that everything is, you know, designed and to code and is complying with National Electric Code. So Tyler did a really good job of talking about this, but I did want to include some of the operating characteristics of these projects. We're really a good neighbor. This is a consistent and passive land use in this area where we're gonna be putting this in. There's very minimal impact to the area roads because once we build this thing, it just sort of sits there and hums along. There is no exterior illumination, it's quiet, you know, the, about the sound of an air conditioner from the inverters. Of course, those are gonna be in the center of the array, so that'll be difficult to hear from, from very many places. No odors, of course, it's clean energy, we're producing energy from the sun. And as you saw from the photos on the previous slide, we do have a very low profile to the ground. We do use local labor during construction and for ongoing maintenance, so when we're coming out to take care of the weeds, we're always looking to find a qualified contractor who can do that right here in the community, because it doesn't make sense to drive somebody all the way up from Denver to mow something. We want to work with local folks, that helps keep money here in the economy and also helps keep our costs down. We'll come out a few times a year, some of that's gonna be to manage the vegetation, some of that's gonna be to do an electrical checkup, because of course, we don't make money if this thing doesn't produce the energy that we think it's gonna produce at this location. We're contracting with members of the local community to subscribe to the energy that's produced. They only get a credit from XL for the energy that gets produced, and we only get to bill them for a portion of whatever credit they get. So if this thing is not operating, then we're not getting the most amount of money that we can as a return on our investment. And of course, at the end of this, many years in the future, we're gonna take all of this equipment, the above and the below ground, and we're gonna recycle almost all of it because it's commodities. It's steel, aluminum, and copper, and then it's gonna be the solar modules, which will resell or reuse however we can at that time, and they may simply be recycled at that time as well. That's all I have tonight, but I'm happy to field questions that you guys may have about this.
I got a question for you, John. When you said compliance with the National Electric Code, is a state electrical inspector then involved in the, in the certificate of occupancy for this?
It just depends on how you guys do those inspections here in Brush. If you guys work with the state for your electrical inspections, then whoever the regional inspector from the state would be. On the other hand, if you do that internally or work with a local, you know, contract company to do that inspection, then they would be responsible for that, but just depends for the municipality how they go.
And we, we do work with the state on that, so the question earlier from Monty about the permit, the majority of that will be done, as you mentioned, on the electrical side, which is done through the state.
Do the panel, the panels that you use, I'm sure are resistant to hail. If we get like really big hail, does it, does it wipe a field like that out, or can it withstand big?
So, I've got some anecdotal evidence for you, and I've got some sort of manufacturer evidence for you. I'll start with the manufacturer evidence. They say that these modules are designed to take a direct impact from a one-inch diameter hailstone falling at terminal velocity. So, that's a pretty big hailstone. Now, I'll give you a little anecdotal evidence. We just came up now on the two-year anniversary of that really serious hailstorm on the west side of Denver that did, you know, several billion dollars' worth of damage. National Renewable Energy Lab is right over there in West Denver, and experienced the biggest of the big hail from that, that storm. They have, I think they have eight or ten megawatts of solar panels on that site, so you know, sixty-one, they probably have thirty thousand solar panels out there. The reports that I heard coming out of there were that only something like thirty or thirty-five of those modules were, were broken by that hail, so.
Do you carry insurance if, if we're gonna devastate that field?
Absolutely.
Insurance would cover putting new panel.
Yep.
The other thing is you, you said thirty-five year lifespan. Is that with existing panels, or does a panel wear out and you have to replace it over a period of time?
That would be with this existing equipment.
Okay.
So the panel manufacturers warrant the modules for twenty-five years, but people who have had solar panels in places like California since the seventies, of course, those panels don't produce the same amount of energy per area that these panels do. But there's folks who still have panels out there from the seventies that work just fine. Yeah, they're still going.
Earlier in your presentation, you talked about individuals in the community could, could get on. Could you expand on that just a little bit? I mean, what's the cost? Is it under a contractor?
Yeah, yeah, I can talk about that. So the premise of the community solar program is that a lot of folks, solar ownership has a high barrier to entry because there's a high upfront cost, and you get a payback over many years. There are other reasons that people may not be able to participate with solar and energy directly. They might have a beautiful house with big trees, and you, why would you cut down big beautiful trees to put solar panels on? Or if you're a municipality or a school district, maybe you don't have the upfront cash or the space on your roof. Community solar was developed to meet the needs of those people who didn't have a cookie cutter solution. So the way it works is you sign a contract with us to subscribe to energy that that solar array produces. And we go back and we look at your past energy usage. We determine how many panels from that array you would need to offset the energy that you use over the course of a year, say at your house, or your business, or at your municipality. say at your house or your business or at your municipality. Every month, the solar array produces energy and there's an electric meter right there, right, right before the energy goes into Excel's lines. And it counts every single kilowatt hour of energy produced. Well, if you subscribe to five percent of the energy from that array and it produced a hundred thousand kilowatt hours in a month, then you're going to get credit for five thousand of those kilowatt hours. Excel Energy is actually going to take those five thousand kilowatt hours. They're going to say that each one was worth six point two cents. And they're going to credit you five thousand times point zero six two and that amount of money is going to show up on your bill. Then you're going to get a bill from me for a portion of your credit. So the difference between the credit that you get on your bill from Excel Energy and the bill that you get from me is going to be money that you save every month on your electric bill. And yeah, we can sign up, and anybody can subscribe to these. Residential customers, commercial customers, municipal, nonprofit customers are all eligible to sign up.
What if you're like REA?
Unfortunately, right now, REA does not have a community solar program. So this program is only open to retail distributed electrical customers who get their energy from public service or, or Excel Energy. But if you want to call REA and tell them that they should do something like this, I encourage you to do that because when I call them and tell them that, they say, "You're just a developer. We need to hear this from our, our customers, our members."
Any other questions?
Well, I guess I'm speaking, you know, I have property that has REA on it, but I live in town, so how does that work?
Your house, but not the one outside of town.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I think that's right, yeah. If you pay your, your, your bill at your house to Excel or public service, then you would be eligible to subscribe to the output from this array. But we wouldn't be able to provide that same opportunity for the piece in REA.
Thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, at this point in the hearing, I would open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Are there any other councils have any other comments or questions? Okay, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to either approve or deny the application.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will close the public hearing. Now I will ask for, thank you Beau, earning your money tonight. I would ask for a motion to approve or deny the application for a special use permit on behalf of TCA Micro Grid Energy LLC.
I will move that we approve.
Okay, is that, as with the six conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the six conditions?
A second.
Second. Any other further discussion? Andrea, roll call vote please.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Councillor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councillor Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. We'll move on to five C, public hearing application for a special use permit on behalf of John Becker, DBA KIFO LLC for a hundred and twenty by forty foot self-storage building at fourteen oh five Edison. And I'll open the public hearing and we have a staff report again by Tyler.
All right, and KIGO is actually the organization, organization.
Oh, I must have a typo, okay.
That's all right. No problem. So they have submitted an application requesting special use permit for a one hundred and twenty foot by forty foot self-storage facility in a commercial zone. The subject property is roughly a two point six four acre vacant lot. It has an, has the address of fourteen oh five Edison Street, Brush, Colorado. All right, sorry. Attached to the report is an area location map, the applicant's application and the associated site plans. All the necessary public notices were placed out for this one as well. Not to be too redundant, but just a quick refresher from the previous special use hearing is that in identifying with the land use, city council needs to find if this is desirable to, to the community. But the indiscriminate allowance of which within a district could cause traffic congestion, noise and general deleterious effects on the value, safety or health of the community. Therefore, council considers each special use on an individual basis with emphasis on the condition of the specific site and its environs and adequate and sufficient safeguard to lessen the impact of the use. Section sixteen six twenty states that when reviewing a special use permit, the city council will consider the compatibility of the use with adjacent uses and adjacent zone districts as applicable, including the use's potential traffic generation, noise, lighting, parking requirements and general deleterious effects on such adjacent uses and properties, the conformance with the comprehensive plan and the applicant's history of zoning compliance within the city. So the intent of the commercial zone is to provide a district for the location of commercial uses oriented along major thoroughfares, such as this is on Highway thirty-four there. The location, again, two point six four acre parcel at fourteen oh five Edison Street. It's Lot six C of the R and Z subdivision established in nineteen ninety-eight, which subdivided the previous three, the previous lot into three lots with the north Lot six A zoned as residential medium density. The middle Lot six B was originally split as residential medium density to the north and commercial to the south and the southern Lot six C, which is the one we're speaking about tonight, is commercial. In nineteen ninety-nine, Lot six B was rezoned strictly to commercial. Lot six B has access and utilities provided by a fifteen foot easement on the east side of Lot six C. Neighboring properties for the subject parcel consists of residential and a variety of commercial. So the applicant seeks to build a one hundred and twenty by forty foot self-storage facility on the property, which would be open twenty-four seven with an estimated average of three vehicles a day visiting. The office for the facility would be located at twenty twenty-four Edmonds, where the applicant has another storage site. An eight foot by four foot sign would be attached to the south end of the building, which is compliant within our sign regulations. Due to, to the nature of the business, there would be no adverse noise effects. The use would fill a current vacant lot in the city of Brush. In your packet is a site plan and the related documents that provide a detailed overview of the facility layout. There will be a twenty-five foot setback from Edison Street, which exceeds the twenty foot requirement, a thirty foot setback on the sides, which exceeds the ten foot setback requirements, and a twenty foot setback to the rear, which meets the twenty foot setback requirement. Citizen comments to date, no comments have been received during the review period regarding this proposal. Now to the criteria review, the compatibility. It's anticipated that there will be minimal impact from this proposal, but nothing that would be considered out of character for a commercial zone. There are self-storage facilities in other locations in Brush. When it comes to the comprehensive plan, in your package is a list of relevant goals, policies and strategies from the city's current plan that this does align with. It encourages utilization of available land within the city limits before expanding city boundaries. Again, this is a vacant lot, so it'll be utilizing that. This does support redevelopment within existing city limits. It does support the city's business district and continues efforts to attract desirable businesses and industries to Brush and to achieve, this is goal twelve, achieve an adequate mix of commercial development that meets the needs of Brush citizens and does not excessively impact the city's transportation system. The applicant's compliance history, to date, the applicant has made good efforts to comply with city regulations and standards, has current investment in residential and commercial in Brush and has no history of zoning violations in the city. So in conclusion, should council find that the proposal has met the review criteria, staff recommends that the council grant a special use permit for the storage facility with the following two conditions. Ensure adequate lighting is on the premises for the safety and needs of the business, business's customers and two, prohibit the substantial storage of any explosive materials. That concludes it, any questions?
Tyler, does this have a fence that's going to be around it?
I don't believe any fence is going to be located there. I'll let the applicant speak about that. Anything else?
Where the utility easement is at now, says a thirty foot drive going around. And then, so is there, is this going to be asphalt going around it?
Right now, it's, it's dirt and I do believe it will remain as dirt.
And the stormwater drainage off of this is going to go which direction?
Currently, the stormwater drainage moves towards Edison Street. Well, it's, some of it will of course saturate into the ground since it's permeable, so that will continue as is as of now.
Any other questions? Tyler, thank you.
Okay.
At this point, I'd invite the applicant to come forward and give us a presentation. Mr. Becker.
Evening, how are you? First of all, thank you for letting me have a hearing in front of you. And I don't have much of a presentation compared to the last one. I was thinking maybe I should have brought a PowerPoint, that may have went a lot, a lot further. But we are, our business is looking to expand in Brush. And as we move forward, what we're finding in, in self-storage is that if you move them further out from residence, they actually don't do as well as if they're next to or inside of the city. And as you know, in Brush, it is, it's getting harder and harder to find a lot of any size to try and expand to or go to. We found this property, think it matches very well with what's in its surroundings and what's going on. We've spoken with the landowner, have an option to get that property purchased. This building, as you noticed, doesn't have a layout plan. As of right now, we don't need to expand in probably the next year, maybe two, depending on what happens with the economy and if the legislature behaves a little bit. But we certainly want to have that plan to get these expansions done because we're out of room in our current locations, we've taken up every space we can. This, as we have planned, would not be fenced. There are fences that sit around the property that we would like to improve or to improve. They've fallen down or in disrepair, we'd like to approve that. Sitting around the actual facility would be a crushed asphalt. If we can, our, one of our goals is to start actually paving in between these storage units and get that done. But obviously, that changes some of the drainage and where that all goes and what goes on. We want to make sure that we have that plan done. Feel that this matches, like I said, with the surrounding, there's storage kind of just off to the other side of this and then our facility sits a few blocks away. So it asks for approval.
Okay, council have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll open it up to public comment. Would anyone like to publicly comment? Okay. At this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion to either approve or deny the application for a special, special use permit.
I move to approve the application for the special use permit on behalf of John Becker, DBA KIGO LLC.
Okay, with the two conditions staff recommends?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with two conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Further discussion? Andrea, roll call vote please.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Councillor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Councillor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councillor Sherman.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes. Okay, motion is approved. Moving on to five D, second and final reading of ordinance number eight seventy-five dash nineteen and ordinance approving the lease of certain real estate owned by the city of Brush, commonly known as Lot Two of Agri Park subdivision for a term of twenty-one years with options to extend. Monty has a staff report on that.
Okay, so as the mayor said, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance and this is the property out at English Feed Lot and, which is now the Brush Agri Park. And we've had this in front of council a handful of times now, so I won't go into a lot more detail. But it's roughly ten acres of land that we're leasing to the community solar garden folks. And to date, everything's been put in order, it's had its legal review by our city attorney. And so we're recommending that it's, it's approved again.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number eight seventy-five dash eighteen.
I move for approval, ordinance number eight seventy-five dash nineteen?
Eighteen, is that?
Oh, I have nineteen.
Oh, it's nineteen.
It's nineteen, okay. Okay, have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, discussion? Andrea, roll call vote please.
Councillor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Councillor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councillor Sherman.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five E, first reading of ordinance number eight seventy-six dash... Well, let's see, if the last one was nineteen, I'm showing this as nineteen.
That's two thousand nineteen, so that's.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, Monty has a staff report on smoke-free parks ordinance.
Okay, this is an ordinance that, well, actually, a little history is we had a group of younger Brush citizens come in and talk about smoke-free parks and they had given a request to city council, look into putting together an ordinance to have smoke-free parks. And so kind of a team effort, I believe, our city attorney, police chief and the mayor and Andrea kind of led this one. And essentially, it's some rules in regards to not having smoking in our parks.
And it's more than parks, it's public places.
And the revised version is in front of you tonight. We had a little formatting errors between the state's attorney, Beau's attorney and me. So I think we've gotten some of the bugs worked out and it's in front of you.
Question? Don't we already have an ordinance that you can't smoke in public places? Already unvoiced?
That I don't know, Dan, without looking it up in the, in the code.
I think, I thought it was a state law.
State, state law.
State law that you can't do it, so we don't have a choice, do we?
Well, I think it's limited, I mean, I mean, I thought in the last hearing, we, we talked about limiting it to the city administrator to make the designation, like for the campground itself.
Right.
That could be, or the golf course.
Right.
Property that it doesn't encompass everything, the city administrator, the way it's written, right? Does make that designation?
No, they're all covered. It's not at the discretion of the city administrator what, what particular public places are covered. They're defined.
Oh, okay, at the last meeting, we had talked about the campground and the, and the golf course, if I remember right, maybe.
Well, I think you're right, but that's, I thought there was already a state law that says you can't smoke in and around, yes.
The state law is indoor public spaces and it's in excess of fifteen feet from a public entrance. That is part of the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act. However, the outdoor law is up to municipality and to change with the smoke-free parks. So it's outdoor spaces as opposed to indoor spaces. Does that help?
Yeah. Parks and self-parks.
Okay, this is.
There are going to be some typos that we're trying to make here. Typo.
Oh, oh, yeah, I see that typo.
I found some typos in it too, but they don't make any substantive.
Right, if they don't have a substantive change, we're okay with allowing that to be cleaned up.
Yes.
After, okay. Okay.
And I'm okay with it, I just, I just want to make, you know, before we go in. Altercation of the campground or the golf course that I, I know that is what we're all directed.
Okay, so the interpretation, Beau, is that this would include the campground?
It would include public places, okay. And it, and it's defined as, where are these definitions?
Right here.
A public place means any outdoor place that is publicly or privately owned and open to the general public regardless of any fee or age requirement and includes any parking lot associated with the public place where smoking or use is prohibited according to this article.
But under, under, let's see, which number would that be? Section one, section two? Under section two B, it kind of outlines where it's prohibited. It says, it says, A, playfields, B, recreational areas, C, service areas, and D, other locations as determined by the city.
It says included but not limited to. So those are examples.
Okay, but not limited.
I was reading that one part under C where it says, "For purposes of this section, the city administrator or their designee shall be responsible for posting of the signs in regulated areas." So I thought he had the ability to regulate. in regulated areas, so I thought he had the ability to regulate.
No. The city administrator has the responsibility of having a signage posted. But the ordinance covers outdoor public places.
So is there a way to have the ordinance cover parks and leave off the public places, so it's?
Yeah, we could rewrite it and do just that. But you couldn't adopt it. We could limit it to, to parks, we could limit it to the campground, we could limit it to the golf course, however you want to write it. But now, the, the example that we were provided applied to public places. And that's what we followed, because that was my understanding.
Yeah.
What the council was desiring to see accomplished by this ordinance.
And I, and I think the presentation really was to provide smoke-free parks. Correct? So I think this is kind of an expanded version that wasn't talked about when, when it was presented to us. And I do remember the campground, I, I felt like the campground should kind of be carved out because that was a residential, that was people's residence for the night, I felt. So I think this is more inclusive than, than what I think council was asking to be done. What do you all think?
Yeah, I think so as well.
It includes like parking lots and everything, right?
So our city attorney, there, we, or our state attorney for tobacco has several other ordinances that are drafted and written up with different verbiage and different language too, so that we can make it specific, so it's not so broad.
Yeah, is that, let, let me ask council this, what's our desire here, is our, is our desire to limit it to parks? I, I think that's what I was taking it to.
Where we went, that's where we started.
Right, so is it council's desire to maybe ask staff to go back and rewrite an ordinance that is designed to do that?
So, tell me what you mean by a park. Is a golf course a park?
I would say no.
Okay, there's a park adjoining the golf course, and that would be included.
Yeah, the, yeah, there's a, there's a park over there.
Okay, and Memorial Park on South Clayton Street would be included, for example. And as well as the property across the street around Doty Pond.
Right, yeah, I don't think, I, my idea wasn't to include also the swimming pool, the softball fields, all of that, that entire complex. My understanding was the park itself.
What were, yeah, because what, where were you going to take that?
We were thinking that, we were thinking anywhere where children play and go, so the softball fields, the swimming pool, that was very much so wanted. The park over by the golf course, the skate park, and Doty Pond. We were not including golf course or campground. It was anywhere where young kids go.
And do you have access to guidelines by the state?
I have, yes, I have contacts, I have given those contacts to Andrea. However, what I brought in was the verbiage and the verbiage for the ordinance for Akron, that Akron used. It was specific for Akron and what they wanted. We do have other ordinances, her na, our attorney is Wendy Morris, she's through the state. And she has gobs of other ordinances that are already drafted that we can figure out the correct verbiage for our city.
Well, I would make a suggestion that we put this on hold until we can identify the exact, all the parks that we have, what's included and what's not included, before we vote on it.
How do we handle that now that we have it as a management issue, Bo?
Motion to table.
Motion to table the ordinance? Okay. Do I have a motion, I have a motion to table the ordinance, do I have a second? Okay, discussion? Andrea, roll call vote please.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Mayor Bain?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Lundstrom?
Yes.
Okay, we'll revisit. Moving on to five F, first reading of ordinance number eight seventy-seven dash nineteen, campground rules. Dwight Anderson, do you have, I, I show you as having this topic. Okay.
You're assigning some fees and everything with it, so.
I'll default to Dwight, because I don't have a voice.
Oh, okay, okay.
The intent here is to resolve several ongoing problems we've had with managing the campground. And I would love to tell you more, but I don't have much voice. So in tandem with that, not only having rules, but assigning fines so that we can enforce those rules in a, in a manner that makes sense, and to resolve problems when they're happening. This has been a collaborative. Yes, sir.
The form that I got had a two hundred dollar penalty in it.
Yes, it did.
And that seems a bit stiff for the first offense there.
The intention there, that is only for people who come in and they fail to register, use of the campground. So the intention is to make sure that the fine is substantially higher than the campground fees, so that a logical person will look at that and say, I'll just pay the fee. If we go with the, the fee schedule of forty-five dollars for all the other fines in there, we felt collaboratively that that would be insufficient to deter people from not paying, so.
And we've had a problem with that in the past?
Significant.
Okay.
Still, still do, I would say, as of today, that's a current problem.
They're very good at, at showing up after five o'clock and then, and then packing up and leaving before seven in the morning and stuff, so there's, they, they know the system in many respects, and so at least there's a little bit of bite to it.
I would say, in addition to that, this eliminates the one free night that we've been giving.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask, this, this does eliminate the, okay.
And that also is problematic, because we have no way of tracking when somebody came and which night was their free night, and we see that heavily abused, so.
Okay. Any other questions, council, on campground rules?
They don't have their permit on the window, does that say?
They do not, because if they come for one night, they don't have to pay, so no permit is issued.
I mean, I guess technically you're supposed to do that, but, you know, it's, you know, it's, it doesn't always happen, especially if it's an honor system type campground like we have.
And, and it's not clearly spelled out that you post the permit even if it's a free night, so.
I can, I can see where it'd be a problem trying to track a free night versus, and then when did they come in, and that.
So you said we're doing away with the free night?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way to put barbed pins around the campground?
We have electric, everything.
You only have one place to go in?
Well, we actually, in, in future plans, and now that the, the area adjacent to it is open, because we took away the bullpen, we do have plans to fence it so that we can monitor that, and maybe you can go to a credit card system for payment, so, so there's not cash or checks that's going to be out there for any amount of time. It's, it's, it's a, it's a little pricey right now, so we want to make sure if we do something like that, we do it right, so we're still kind of in the information gathering stage right now.
Sorry, I may have missed it, why are we doing away with the free, free night, first night for you?
Because we've had so many problems managing and monitoring that. You know, if somebody comes in Friday night, we don't enforce that or know that they came Friday night until Monday morning. And so we have a lot of difficulty with people abusing that.
You know, over the years, I've heard so many people comment about the first night being free, in a positive manner for the city. I just hate to see that go away, I know that it comes with it our problems, but, you know, it's, it's also a positive thing for the city.
I, I do not disagree with you. In tracking and talking with my code enforcement officer, virtually every problem we have at the campground of substance comes from that free night and people abusing that. We saw a significant increase in abuse when Fort Morgan closed their campground down at Riverside Park. And we've seen a, I would say anywhere between a quarter and twenty, I'm sorry, a quarter and fifty percent of the people using the campground are homeless or somewhere kind of in that temporary housing stage. And they definitely abuse that one free night, so that is why we've discussed abolishing that. So I don't know if you have anything.
And up until about, about three years ago, it was, I, I, you know, I, I thought it was the greatest thing there was, the free night, because it wasn't abused, and it's, it's, it's year after year, these last couple, it's just been, it's gotten worse and worse, and, and now it's even spreading over into our park. When I drive to work every morning, and Dwight goes, I can fix that with the sprinkler system, but there's several tents now throughout our park that are there in the mornings every now and then.
You know, Green Play talked about that a little bit in, when they did the Recreation Master Plan, that sometimes you can charge so cheaply that people don't value the, the park. And I, I think we, what, what is it to stay the night after the free night, what is the nightly charge?
Twenty dollars.
See, and that is very, very, I do a lot of camping, that is extremely reasonable for electric to camp for the night. So I, I'm not so sure that, the way I've seen the campground go downhill a little bit, but I, I think you're right, that it, that I, I think the incentive for the free nights' time has passed, and I think we'll still have people take advantage of a very moderately priced park, either way.
I did talk about different areas that we can improve on, to maybe still draw on that, you know, whether working with local businesses or whatever to, you know, give coupons or whatever we can, but, but the, people aren't using the free night for what it was intended for.
I would just add on to that, excuse me, I have talked to some people, I would call them kind of RV lifestyleists, and they are more than happy to donate, usually pay above and beyond what we charge, and just really respect the campground, so.
Any other questions? Ready to take action on this? Okay.
Unless you want to rewrite it like we talked about with the.
All right, so I would ask for, let's see, I would ask for council to introduce the, introduce the ordinance by title.
So do we have that set out what it's going to be, I mean, is it really, whatever, I mean, it seems to be a little bit vague.
I mean, I mean, the, what we had in the packet, the rules? That's what.
I'll introduce ordinance number eight seventy-seven dash nineteen, an ordinance amending chapter eleven of the Brush Municipal Code by adding a new article, five establishing rules for the public campground.
Okay, we have the ordinance introduced, I would look for a motion to approve of the ordinance on first reading and publish in full in the Brush News Tribune.
I'll move to approve the ordinance on first reading and publish in full in the Brush News Tribune.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Do we have a second, further discussion? Andrea, roll call vote please.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Mayor Bain?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Lundstrom?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five G, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four, approving the community solar service agreement between the city of Brush and Mountain Solar Three LLC and the related SRC subscriber, Monty has a staff report on it.
Okay, this resolution is going to actually put in effect our subscribership for that community solar garden that we discussed earlier. And in the past, we've had examples of what the subscribership agreement would look like to council, we've talked about it at a work session. And we also had Eric that came down and presented to us at one point in time. And the city council gave us a thumbs up to move forward in signing up as a subscriber. And so, also, visiting with Bo, Bo said that we needed a resolution for this, so this is the resolution approving that subscribership into the community solar garden.
Okay.
And it also authorizes, Monty is a city attorney, after the execution of the subscriber agreement by Mountain Three, to sign the agreement with Exhaler G.
And once we do that, then the city would start receiving credit back from?
Not until the garden is operational.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
I know we got to wait for that. All right. Okay, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four, I'd look for a motion to either approve or deny the agreement.
I'd move we approve, resolution twenty nineteen dash four.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
A second?
We have a second, discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mayor Bain?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Lundstrom?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to five H, I would look for a motion to approve proclamation two thousand nineteen dash five for Police Week. Monty, do you have a?
Uh, this is just the annual proclamation that we have, it's in your packet, and normally, I believe, the mayor reads the proclamation if the council approves it.
Okay, do I have a motion? Okay, we have motion to approve National Police Week proclamation, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? All those opposed? Okay. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Brush play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Therefore, I, Mayor Rick Bain, and the City Council of the City of Brush urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities have established for themselves the enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rick Bain, and the Council of the City of Brush, Colorado, do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of the city of Brush to observe the week of May twelfth through May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, as National Police Week in the city of Brush, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Brush, Colorado, this thirteenth day of May, two thousand nineteen. I will present this to our chief. Thank you on behalf of everyone on council. Okay, moving on to five I, proclamation two thousand nineteen dash six for Public Works Week, Monty.
Okay, so same as the last one, this is a proclamation, this is for our Public Works Department, which city of Brush, our Public Works Department, we have water department, a wastewater department, the Public Works or the Streets Department that we normally call Public Works, and also our trash department as well, that kind of all fall underneath this. And so this is the following week, and it's a proclamation for National Public Works.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'd move we approve proclamation twenty nineteen dash six for Public Works, this Works Week.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Marlene, second? Discussion? Andrea, roll call vote. Oh, wait, no, all those in favor? All those opposed? Proclamation is approved. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Brush, and whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Brush, Colorado, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand nineteen marks the fifty-ninth. And whereas the year two thousand nineteen marks the fifty-ninth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved that I, Rick Bane, Mayor, do hereby designate the week, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and the government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the state to be affixed done at Brush, Colorado, this thirteenth day, well, wrong date, thirteen. Yeah, that's right. Thirteenth day of May, two thousand nineteen. Now I will present that to our city administrator. Thank you.
Now I will present to Dale.
Okay. All right. This is a long agenda. Five J, council meeting of May twenty-seventh and November eleventh to be moved or canceled? Andrea.
Every so often, we do have a council meeting that falls on a holiday. And we have May twenty-seventh as Memorial Day and November eleventh is Veterans Day. So council would need to either cancel those meetings and we could reschedule if it needed to be as it got close as a special meeting, or you can hold it on a holiday. It's, it's not a formal action.
Let me ask the city administrator, can we afford to?
Yeah, I'd recommend canceling those. However, if something that we really need to take action on did occur, we would just reset it. But just for our planning purposes, we know.
I know that the ordinance with the smoke-free parks, they're kind of on a timeline to get guidance on that and their budget by June.
Right.
I don't know if that's something that we can do via email or something, but kind of help that. By canceling that meeting is going to throw a kink.
You're talking about the smoke?
Smoke-free parks.
So is staff going to work on that, or is she going to do that?
I think our city attorney is working in cooperation with the Health Department's attorney, is that right, Bo?
Yeah, and I, and rather than trying to spin my wheels to, to revamp this ordinance, I'd wait to get a draft from, from that attorney.
I know, I know the timeline Dana was talking about. Public Health Department has some extra funding for the city, should this pass. That is, they would like to know whether or not this is going to be something the city is looking forward, moving forward before June, so at some point.
I thought it was June fifteen.
June fifteen?
Or is it June thirtieth because their fiscal year ends June thirtieth?
I think she said June fifteen.
Did she?
I remember.
Maybe they have to get the money spent, so they have to.
What would our meeting in June be, the first council meeting?
And I think if they have an indication of where we're going, she can kind of jump on.
I don't think there's any doubt that we want to do that.
I think once we get the ordinance.
Yeah, I think.
It's just carving out.
Okay, so are we good for taking action? Okay, so canceling May twenty-seventh and November eleventh, I would need a motion to do that.
I'd move we cancel those two dates unless, as the city administrator said, there's a need to come together. We would come together, otherwise.
Okay, a motion to cancel unless there's a need arise. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi.
Yes.
Counselor Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, number six, moving on to finance.
I move we approve city expenditures from April twenty-second to May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, totaling three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Lundstrom.
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi.
Yes.
Counselor Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to staff reports, Joanne. Melody? Yes, on Thursday night? Seven P M, works? Thank you. All right, sorry.
I just have one quick item. Since we have council, the, the council meeting on May twenty-seventh, I would ask that finance come into City Hall on May thirtieth and sign off on the bills so we can conduct business as usual and pay our debts.
Okay.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Joanne. Police chief, boss.
I have two things very quickly. The JAG grant that we requested received preliminary approval. That will be finalized in June. We did get the, the statement of four years of funding for a total of five hundred sixteen thousand dollars. And that's shared between us and Fort Morgan for this project. And then the second thing is tomorrow at two o'clock, we are having a appreciation for the police department, for all the officers there, and I would like to invite you all, if you can attend, please do. If not, I understand.
Please give my apologies to the police department, I will be in Morgan County doing my second day of jury duty on a trial.
We appreciate you doing your civic duty.
The course?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other question on this, the JAG grant between Fort Morgan and the City of Brush.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the reasoning why the Sheriff's Department wasn't part of that grant, or?
Because of staffing. At the time, he was down eight patrol officers.
Oh.
And felt that just because he was so understaffed.
He didn't, couldn't afford the resource?
There's no way to justify participating, so. We have his support. He's already said he'll enter an MOU to, to work with us, but he can't provide personnel, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's good news. Community Service Director Lance?
I have nothing to say.
Marketing specialist, well, you know what, I don't have both your titles on here, but.
We know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So two things tonight, last council meeting, council approved the final plat for Homestead Meadows. And so with that, the developer put a request in for incentives for the project as well. And so just kind of plugging that in council's mind tonight, that that's something that they were inquiring about, something that perhaps will pick up discussion at some point. Just want to let you know, if you have any thoughts in the meantime. Consider those and feel free to pass those on to us here at the city. The other one, also happening this week, on the sixteenth, we have a developer we've been speaking with on housing here in Brush, and he's, has an open invitation to the community to come to a presentation at the course on the sixteenth from noon to one thirty on what they would like to do in Brush. It is RSVP. And so anybody who has not received that and would like to go to that, they can contact City Hall. We'd be glad to give them the information that they can RSVP for on that. So they, they got some exciting plans and we'll see how it takes flight and moves forward going forward. But that's happening Thursday. That's it.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Best and brightest intern, Matt. City clerk Andrea. City administrator Monty.
Just one thing I want to add in regards to the community solar garden is the last time I talked to him as far as the timeline of when they would start putting those out there, we do have with that, that final reading of the ordinance, I believe it's a thirty-day grace period, three-day, three-day holding period before they can really do anything out there. But they were looking at July, August timeframe, any ways to start that project. So if anything different comes up, I'll let you guys know.
One other point on that too, Monty, we need to, to wait until Excal Energy decides where the electrical connection's going to be from Highway seventy-one or from County Road T. And that will also provide electricity up to the lamp processor facility.
Open that door back.
That's all I had.
Okay, moving on to number eight, mayor and council reports. Anybody have anything to report? Again, I would invite people to, to go to this presentation at the golf course on Thursday to hear what the developer has to say. I think there'd be good information there. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we are adjourned, we're.